Thank you. Thank you very much and good evening. First of all, I want to thank my colleague and my friend, Muriel Bowser, for such a nice introduction. Thank you for hosting us tonight in Ward 4. And I appreciate too, Muriel, the work that you do every day on behalf of the people of Ward 4. How about a hand for your councilmember in Ward 4? I want to acknowledge that her parents are here tonight also. Please, a big hand for Mr. and Mrs. Bowser, who are here tonight as well. And her brother, who is my neighbor. Marvin lives right around the corner from me in Ward 7, and he's very active in our civic association. I'm delighted that you came up to Ward 4 tonight to be with us, Marvin. Thank you very much. I wanted to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues. Incorporated by reference, that's the term we use in the council, right? The other acknowledgements that occurred earlier. But I especially want to acknowledge the two councilmembers who, sitting councilmembers who are here. And I don't think they missed a town hall meeting. First of all, the gentleman from Ward 5, my dear friend, Councilmember Harry Thomas Jr. And of course, the councilmember at large, who represents everybody in the District of Columbia. I told him I'd never call him "new" again, so I'll just say "the newest" councilmember, and that is, of course, Councilmember at large, Michael Brown. I want to thank Pastor Murphy also for hosting us tonight. It's not my first time at People's Congregational. I've been here any number of times. It's always been very comfortable coming here, always been well-received. And once again, we thank you, Pastor Murphy, for opening the doors of People's Congregational Church, as has been done so many times, to host us tonight. Thank you, sir, for hosting us tonight. Also want to acknowledge, I was going to say the former first mother of the District of Columbia, but she's now reestablished herself as she's going to be the first mother, because she adopted me as a godson. So we have to acknowledge the presence of Mrs. Virginia Williams, who's here with us And I too want to, I want to acknowledge the gentleman who set the tone for what a chairman should do as chairman of the council. And one of the things I'm sure he realized, and I certainly realize at this point, is how demanding and difficult the job is. And that is the man who put the framework in place for what a chairman of a council is, and that is, of course, Sterling Tucker. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You know, back after, soon after the primary, we had an idea that we'd like to get out and hear from people, and let people hear from me, rather than having, you know, information imparted by others. It would give me a chance to get out and be able to do that myself, let people know what I stand for, and frankly, to hear the issues that are important to you. The fact that it matter is, most of us who've done these things before, know that if you get 100 people out for a town hall meeting, you can consider yourself an unqualified success. Well, we've done, we've done more than that. This is the seventh of eight town hall meetings. We have Ward 6 tomorrow night, which will be at the Atlas Theater, which is in the neighborhood I grew up in. I used to go to Atlas Theater, Tommy, as a child. And we know that wasn't yesterday. Tomorrow night, we'll be at the Atlas Theater. But let me just tell you something. The first, the first town hall meeting was held in Ward 5 that was hosted by Councilmember Thomas. And we had no idea how many people would show up. And 1,000 people showed up in Ward 5 for that town hall meeting. And then we went from there to Ward 3, where we had 800 people, and then we went, you know, to Ward 2. You know, we've been across the city. And last, last Thursday night, we were in Ward 8, where people often assume that folks don't get involved, people don't get engaged, they don't, you know, they're not as active as others are in the city. Well, for those who were there last Thursday night, I'm sure they have been disavowed of that, 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 that information, quote-unquote "information," because there were not 1,000 people in Ward 8 last Thursday night. There were 1,200 people who showed up in Ward 8 for the town hall meeting. Also want to acknowledge one other person before we go further, and that is our city administrator, who is a resident of Ward 4, and somebody I've known, you know, for a very, very long time, who I have immense respect for, appreciate the job that he has done for people of the District of Columbia. And I just want to give it, give the opportunity for us to recognize Neil Albert, who is here with us tonight. In any event, these town hall meetings are an opportunity for us to interact with one another. And I really want to take the opportunity, frankly, to do more of this, because I think if we can get out and talk about the issues, you understand where I'm coming from, I understand where you're coming from, I think we have the basis then, not only for good communication, but for good decisions. You know, people look at the results of this election, and they come to the conclusion, the media did, of course, that we are a divided city, that we are a racially divided city, we are an ethnically divided city, we are an economically divided city, we are a socially divided city, we are a geographically divided city. Now, in my case, I don't simply come to the conclusion that, you know, that I won Wards 4, 5, 7, and 8. I am very grateful to everyone in this room who voted for me, and those across the city who did. But I also recognize something else, and that is, the people who didn't vote for me, it isn't necessarily a racial or ethnic or geographic vote. I recognized a long time ago, that frankly, with the short campaign that we ran, and even though I've been the chair of the council for almost four years now, there are a lot of people in the District of Columbia who don't have a clue who I am. And that's just the reality. I'm a native Washingtonian. I am a product of the public schools of the District of Columbia. Went to George Washington University undergraduate and graduate school, which I'm very proud to have been a graduate of that university. But I also recognize that despite the fact that I've been here all my life, there are a lot of new residents in this city, there are a lot of people who don't necessarily pay attention to this stuff on a daily basis, and a lot of people who just don't know who we are. So one of the purposes of these town hall meetings, frankly, is to get out, get out and let people know who Vince Gray is. At the end of the day, if they still don't like me, they don't have to vote for me. I understand that. I hope they do. I hope they do. And the next, you know, year, we have an election on November 2nd, right? Coming up November 2nd, next Tuesday. But if they don't, that's what a democracy is all about. But I take the, I take the responsibility, the onus is on me, to get out and try to let people know who I am, and try to encourage people to, you know, step up and let's work effectively together to make this city the great city that it can be. 600,000 people working effectively together. So, you know, there is a, there's a, there's a model, I was thinking about this, Marvin, when I was mentioning you before, your activism with the Hillcrest Civic Association. There is a model that I hope we follow, and that is, a number of years ago, the Hillcrest Community Civic Association, on the eastern end of the city, joined hands with Palisades, which is on the western end of the city. And for now, about 10 or 12 years, those two civic associations have been working effectively together. They do one or two or three projects each year. They have gotten to know each other, they respect one another, they, they participate, one participates in the Palisades Parade, others, the others come over for the Nanny Helen Burrows Parade, which is open in Ward 7. And people have gotten accustomed to one another, they've gotten comfortable with one another, and they now work effectively together. And my friends, can't we do that all across the city for the good of this, for the good of the District of Columbia? Now, a lot of people have asked the question of, where do, where do I stand on education and education reform? And by the way, education reform probably means something different for as many people as there are in this room. And actually, when I first heard those questions, I was absolutely astounded, because, first of all, I care as deeply about the children of this city as anybody else does. And I was proud to be able to stand up in 2007, when the mayor sent the legislation over to the council, to help be a champion, to help shepherd through the council, education reform. What we did was, we gave the mayor the ability to control the governing responsibilities for the public schools of the District of Columbia. And we took what was an organization, the DC Public Schools, that was about that big, and we made it about that big. And frankly, in the course of it, we made it a lot more manageable. How did we do that? First of all, we had buildings and grounds issues in the public schools of the city. And I don't know how any superintendent before was able to manage that responsibility, because superintendents are hired to be educators, right? Not, not to build buildings. So, we joined with the mayor and said, "We're going to create a new agency called the Office of Public Education Facilities Modernization," which for the last three and a half years has been headed by Alan Lu. And one need only go across the city and see the evidence of new schools being built, schools being rehabilitated, schools being renovated, to see the wisdom in making the decision to take that out of the DC Public Schools and put it somewhere else. We also have a lot of state responsibilities in this city. State responsibilities that require us to do the things that if it were Maryland, the state of Maryland would do it, not the city of Baltimore, or not the city of Annapolis. We have all those responsibilities rolled up into one. So we created another new agency called the Office of the State Superintendent for Education, and we put all of those state responsibilities into that new agency. We took all the legal functions out and put them in the office of the Attorney General. And we took all the information technology functions out and put them in the office of the Chief Technology Officer. We moved out literally hundreds of millions of dollars of responsibility in order to permit the DC Public Schools to be able to focus on what is the most important part of their mission, and that is educating our kids. Getting our kids to a point where they stay in school, first of all, and feel like they want to be there, that they graduate, and that they have skills at the end of it that will allow them to compete in an increasingly complex society. Now, again, not only was I proud to be able to help pioneer through, the champion through the council, shepherd through the council, the legislation, but also, what we've done is tried to create a vision for a birth through 24 continuum of public education services. One of the things that we, my colleagues joined with me in, and I appreciate Harry Thomas Jr. being a real champion for it, and that was, two years, in 2008, we said we wanted to be, to take the bold step, the bold step of creating universal pre-kindergarten services in the District of Columbia. That we wanted to be a jurisdiction, a city that was known for opening the school doors to children, not when they get five years old, when they become three years old. We said we were going to do it through our DC Public Schools, we were going to do it through charter schools, and we were going to do it through community-based organizations. And we said we would get it done by 2014, right, Muriel? That we would get it done in six years. And Tommy and Muriel joined me. I don't think you were with us at that, yet by that time, were you, Michael? But they joined me along with the rest of our colleagues in making that happen. And this has been so successful, that it didn't take until 2014. Actually, by the end of this past September, about four weeks ago, we became what I think is the first city in America to say that we have a seat for every three- and four-year-old in an organized educational program, and that is something, ladies and gentlemen, we ought to be mighty proud of. I want to open the door to universal access to infants and toddlers. Is there, is there a point when it's too early to expose children to education, educational opportunities, if their parents want them to be involved in those opportunities? I would love to see us have an organized educational program for children who are six months old. Well, I'll tell you what, you all call it what you want to, but I know there's a lot of parents are looking for childcare out here, okay? Why shouldn't it be an educational program, so that we start teaching these kids when they're six months old? So that by the time they get to kindergarten, they are ready to succeed, not already hopelessly behind like so many of our kids are? We've lost kids by the time they are in the first and second grade. They don't drop out of school, but they psychologically disengage at that stage. And they sit there, not learning anything, or not learning at a, at the proper pace until they get old enough and big enough to drop out of school. And that's what we want to stem with our early childhood education program, and I fervently believe that we can do that. You know, somebody asked me, you know, it's such a, such a prima facie case for early childhood education, why is that across the America? Politicians don't do this much. Well, I think the answer is obvious, and that is because politicians oftentimes are under the gun, and that is, "Show me what you did for me right now." Muriel talked about it earlier. So many people are, don't have the patience to wait. And frankly, if we don't make these kinds of investments, we're always going to be trying to correct the problem. So I want to thank all my colleagues who joined me in helping to take this journey, because it was a bold decision on their part. They may not even see the fruits of their investment until years down the road, but it will make a mighty investment, frankly, in turning around educational outcomes in the District of Columbia. We have already seen one benefit of it, and that is, for the first time in decades in this city, we have seen a stabilization in the enrollment in the DC Public Schools. And the reason for it is because we've had so many new kids, young kids, in preschool and pre-kindergarten, who have come into the school system, that it has actually offset the continued drain of students out of our secondary schools. We lost 16 to 22% last year, the continued drain, because we've had so many kids at three and four years old coming in. What is that going to do? It's going to capture young parents into our school system. It's going to give us an opportunity to work with those parents who are very young themselves, and hopefully, give us a leg up when they get ready to make the decision as to whether they stay in the city or not, that they will stay in the city, because they've had such a positive experience with our early childhood education program. So we're going to continue to make those investments over the next four years, and I promise you, we will see the benefits of it in the years to come. Now, education reform did not begin in 2007 in the District of Columbia. Education reform began before that, all right? Fact that it matter, one of the most significant forms of education reform started around 1996 and 1997. And that was the advent, right, Emily? The advent of charter schools in the District of Columbia. We had a handful of students, I don't know, 100, 200, 500, in the early years of charter schools. And what it did was create a choice for parents, a parents to choose whether they want a traditional public school, or they want to go to a charter school, which is also a public school, because it's public money that are funding those schools. And in case you haven't noticed, we don't have 500 kids in charter schools anymore. Last count that came out two weeks ago, we now have 29,600 kids in charter schools in the District of Columbia. Forty percent of our public school enrollment is in charter schools, and the other 60% in traditional public schools. And frankly, I think it's great. Let's create the competition, because you know who will benefit by, at the end of the day? The children will benefit from this. If this one is not doing it, go over to that one. If that one is not doing it, go over to this one. And it'll make both of them better as a result of it. As we look at our DC Public Schools, one of the things that I hope we will do, and we're going to work on, is to do something that I still, to this day, don't understand why we made the decision. Can anyone tell me why we got rid of vocational education in our schools? I, I have no idea. For those of you who've been around the city for a while, you know that there was a time when we had seven vocational schools. One of them, one of them right up the street, right? Yeah, Berdick. That's right, Berdick. And we had Armstrong, and Bell, and Chamberlain, and the Penn Center, and MMW, Washington, and Phelps. Seven. And by the way, we've now invested $70 million in Phelps, and Phelps has been reopened, and we have a few programs now at Cardozo. In fact, they did the launching today of some additional programs. But why can't we have career and technical education programs in every one of our high schools around the District of Columbia? I think we can do that, because it will give kids who don't want to go on to college then, or at a later point, or until a later point, the opportunity to go to work with a set of marketable skills right then. We ought to be turning kids out in the 12th grade, who could go to work if they want to go to work. And I tell you the truth, it wouldn't hurt even those who want to go to college. I wish, I wish I had some plumbing courses and electrical courses. You call up, you call up a plumber and electrician, all right? The first thing is, whether they even show up or not. And the second thing is, if they do show up, and you see the bill, you'll wish they hadn't shown up because of the cost to you. So let's work on restoring that. And we've also got to reform special education in this city. We have, we have, we have what arguably is the, is the worst special education system in the country. And it didn't start just two years or four years ago. This has been building for years and years. What is astounding, what is astounding is, that the number of kids who we have in private schools, for whom we pay in the District of Columbia. Over 2,800 kids now in private schools. And a year ago, we paid, for that particular year, $166 million in order to have those kids in private schools. We pay another $90 million in transportation costs for special education, and almost $10 million in attorney's fees for those, for those kids. A quarter of a billion dollars, which doesn't even include the classroom costs in DCPS, or the classroom costs for special education in charter schools. I know we can do better than that, and we can do it not only for financial reasons, but educational and social reasons as well. How can we say we are preparing kids for a wider world, when we don't even involve them in the wider world as a part of their special education activities? I'm also, I'm also proud that we now, just over a year ago, 14 months ago, we created the first-ever community college in the District of Columbia. We have, we have over 2,500 students already enrolled. We worked to get the back of school renovated, right, Muriel? Right, Tommy? Got it renovated. Took us, took us, took two and a half to three months to get that done, because we gave them their own procurement authority to get it done. And they had a dedication ceremony, went through the school, looks great. 35,000 square feet renovated there, now open and providing classes that will get people back to work, workforce development, continuing education, as well as opportunities for people to pursue remediation, if that's, if that's what they need at this point. We now have a campus at PR Harris in Ward 8, and we opened at 801 North Capitol Street just two weeks ago, the headquarters of the community college. We will have a campus of the community college in every ward of the District of Columbia by a year from now. What that also has done, is now open the door, working with Dr. Sestims, the president of the university, to be able to create the kind of university of the District of Columbia that we all envisioned a number of years ago. And that is, we'll take all the remedial and continuing education programs out and put them in the community college, and we will have a four-year college that eventually will be able to compete with any state university in America. You watch and see. We, we don't have open enrollment in UDC anymore, but we do have open enrollment in the community college. Anybody who wants to go to the community college can enroll. And if you get a two-year degree from the community college, you automatically will be accepted then to the University of the District of Columbia. So we haven't closed the door on anybody, but what we have done is open the door to being able to be regarded as one of the best universities in America if we continue these kinds of investments. So, the next time somebody asks you where Gray stands on education, would you give him my phone number? I'll be happy to talk to him about it. I happen to be a product of, and a proponent of, public education, and we should be working towards to make, make sure that every one of our kids, from the time almost that they are born, until they become young adults, that they have an opportunity for a first-class public education. Now, we know, we know all of this also is germane to getting people back to work. We have got a horrific unemployment level in this city. The unemployment level citywide is 10.4%, in Ward 7, it is 19%, and in Ward 8, Ward 8, 30 to 35% of the people who are looking for jobs are out of work at this stage. We've got, and we've got to attack this in three ways. Bring back vocational education to our high schools, use the community college as a training ground for people to get to work, and frankly, we need to work on reforming our Department of Employment Services. We need a... You know, when more people ask me about DOES, when they refer to DOES as a place where you go and, go and apply for unemployment, than say that they get training there, there's something wrong with that picture. I don't want our DOES to be defined as a place where the unemployed go to get unemployment benefits. I want you to go there to be able to get ready for a job, and then have a job waiting at the end. Now, let me, let me tell you something else. I look forward to working with our, our people in the city. Everybody know what the First Source Agreement is? The First Source Agreement says that if you get a contract at a certain level in the District of Columbia, that 51% of the new hires must be people who live in the District of Columbia. And I'm not sure that everybody's doing that, all right? And I guess there's a few people in here who agree with me. So, my view is this, we need to have a stronger compliance effort, and frankly, I think it's real simple at the end of the day. If we find out that you didn't hire the people you were supposed to hire, then we should take your contract away from you. And you don't, and you don't, and you don't get another contract. In Monopoly, they would say, "You do not pass go," and you go straight to jail. And by the way, there is no get out of jail free card if you don't, if you don't comply with the First Source Agreement. So, we've, and we've got opportunities. I'm not going to talk a lot about Homeland Security coming to Ward 8, but the reality is, there will be 14,000 jobs that will be located or relocated to that campus, 22,000 construction jobs, and a real opportunity to leverage that. Muriel talked earlier about a small area plan. We now have a small area plan that we did for that area, and it lays out a blueprint for how we can leverage that into economic development for Alabama Avenue, Martin Luther King Avenue, Good Hope Road, and that areas in that corridor over there. We should not create another enclave, where people just go in there and leave at the end of the day. There should be the amenities that will attract people to interact with that community over there, and amenities that are available to the people who live in Ward 8. Now, I hope too, that we can work on creating the kind of economic development on the eastern end of the city, that really has been increasingly evident in the core of the city. There's a lot of disposable income on the east end of this city, and it hemorrhages every day, because people don't have opportunities to shop. We just doubled the number, I live in Ward 7, as you heard, we just doubled the number of sit-down restaurants in Ward 7, from one to two. Well, at least we got choices now, okay? But obviously, we need to do better than that. And we've got projects that we've been working on. I know Neil knows we've been working on the Skyland, we've been working on Penn Branch, and we hope to be able to continue the progress on those, Neil, to be able to see them come to fruition. Also, we need to, we need to work, continue to work on getting more of our police officers out on the streets of the District of Columbia. And it doesn't just have to be walking around. We got segways, we got bicycles, we got motorbikes, we got a variety of options now. And the other thing is, I want to work on, and I think we can do this, working with our community college. Did you all know that only 19% of our police officers actually live in the District of Columbia? 81% live outside the city. And we've got to create incentives to bring them back. First of all, when we talk about bringing, when we talk about career and technical education in our schools, why can't being a police officer or a firefighter be one of those options to our kids, to start that process when they're 11th and 12th grade, and then continue on after they finish high school, to become a police officer or a firefighter? And also, you know, we have Walter Reed, which is going to be redeveloped. We ought to be able to develop, shouldn't we be able to work, develop workforce housing there, to attract some of our police officers, and our firefighters, and our teachers as well, to help support them to be able to live in the city? And it will pay for itself, because frankly, we all know that we can't tax income at its source in the District of Columbia, so that when people live outside, in Maryland or Virginia... source in the District of Columbia so that when people live outside in Maryland or Virginia or Delaware or Texas or wherever they commute every, from every day, there's not a dime of that that we can recapture. Not a dime. And we are the only jurisdiction in America that can't tax income at its source. Only one! So by the way, my last point is this. We need to pay attention to these midterm elections because they have important implications for the future of how we are dealt with in this city. It's, it's well-known fact, we don't have self-determination. We thought, we thought in early 2009, I admit, I was one of them. I was hooting and hollering, man. When Obama got elected and we had a Democratic House and a Democratic Senate, I just knew really that that was the point at which we were going to get a vote in Congress. I was counting down the days. Said it'd be a matter of weeks, just a matter of weeks, Muriel, before we get it. And it was, it was ready to come up. And then along came a senator from Nevada and a congressman from Mississippi who said, "We think y'all should have a vote also." Just one small... Oh, excuse me. "We think you should, we strip away all your gun control laws in the District of Columbia and then your council," which of course is the state legislature, "the county legislature and the city council, all rolled into one, will never be able to legislate on guns again." Now for me, that was the poison pill. I want to vote just like anybody else. But why in the world should we have to pay a price that nobody else has to pay? Why shouldn't we get the same vote that all the, the people that represent those 435 congressional districts and those 50 states in America? Why shouldn't we have the same rights as them? We paid the same taxes to the state. We paid $3.6 billion in taxes last year. What is it going to take? Now that we've paid our membership dues, where do we have to go in order to get a membership card in the United States of America so that we can be treated like citizens just like everybody else? Now, now I've been to those meetings, I go to a lot of them, about statehood, okay? And I think that's where we should go. It's time, it's time to fight for statehood. It's not going to happen tomorrow or next week, but it's time to fight for statehood in this city. I've been to the rallies where there were 50 people, 75 people. I've even been to one that had as many as 100 people there. We did have, we did have a march that went up on the hill where we had 2,000, 3,000 people that marched up there. We didn't do anything after that. But let me tell you something, nobody's going to give us anything. Frederick Douglass said it best, and that is, "Power concedes nothing without a struggle." And unless we are willing to struggle, it is not going to happen. Now people have asked me, "Gray, are you willing to go up on the hill and talk to these folks?" Sure, I'm willing to go up on the hill and talk about them. Now what kind of impact do you think that's going to have? You know, I look over my right shoulder, I look over my left shoulder, and I see nobody behind me, all right? And I will have a very polite meeting, you know, "How's it going in the District of Columbia?" "Well, thank you very much, you know." That 15-minute meeting, you know, keep us posted on how it's going in the city. And if we can be helpful, you let us know. Well, you know what? It's not going to change until the people become outraged enough in the District of Columbia to say that I am sick and tired of paying federal taxes with nothing to show for it. So I hope that you will join me in working on self-determination. Somebody asked me if I was prepared to go to jail. Sure. You know, I, I don't, I don't have a problem having handcuffs on. But you know what? If it's 500 or 1,000 of us out there, what jail are they going to put us in? There's not a jail big enough to hold all those people in the District of Columbia. They're not going to put anybody in jail. And what, what are they going to do? What are they going to do, Vince? If we keep it up? What are they going to do? And, you know, and, and the story of me getting locked up with a handcuff, that'll be a one-day story. It'll be a picture in the paper with a caption on it, "Mayor arrested." And that'll be the end of that. So I invite you to work with me on creating a different kind of climate for self-determination in this city. And then finally, and then we'll open it up for questions, finally, we have to recognize that we have some serious budget problems in this city. There, there is no question about it. You know, I've tried not to put a, a coat of sugar on any of this stuff because we've been cutting budgets now for two years. We have cut hundreds of millions of dollars out of this budget. We're now facing a $175 million problem that we've got to deal with right now. And frankly, it may grow to as much as $400 million by the time we get to next year. And we've got to solve this problem. We don't have, we don't have a bank account left. And yes, we've been in a recession, we've been in a terrible recession in this country. Every jurisdiction is experiencing. Maryland has a billion-dollar budget deficit, Virginia 2.5 billion dollars. I talked to Mayor Bloomberg the other day and he told me that New York City, not New York State, New York City, has a $3 billion budget deficit, $800 million of which is in the, in the education system alone. So we're not in this alone. California, California has a $45 billion budget deficit. I'm going to check my map when I go home to make sure they haven't dropped into the Pacific Ocean yet. But it doesn't matter. It's going to be different in the District of Columbia because if we don't manage ourselves well, trust me, somebody will stand up and say, "We need to bring back the control board" because they don't know how to manage themselves in the District of Columbia. So as painful as it's going to be, we've got to make the decisions. Now, when I go across the city, there is nobody that argues with me. "That's right, Gray, you've got to balance that budget." But while you're balancing it, don't touch that chair right there. Don't touch that exit sign on the wall. Don't touch that door over there. And by the time I add it all up, you know what's left to be able to cut? Nothing. So the reality is, we've got to be able to be willing to, to reduce budgets where we have to or raise revenue if we're willing to do that. But I think we've got to make the case that the expenditure side of this budget has been cut to where the consequences would be so dire that we can't stand it if we don't raise revenue. But we've got to be willing to make that case. We've got to be willing to make that case. And again, you're going to hear more about this when the proposals come out. I can see it now. Hmm, hmm, hmm. What are they doing up there? Got to be some fat in there somewhere. I mean, trust me, if you, if I don't hear it, you will. And we're going to continue to talk about the needs to balance this budget and it's right upon us now. In just a few weeks, we'll have proposals before the council to deal with, and there'll be more after that until we get this budget balanced. So again, I ask you to work with me and I ask you to keep the big picture in front of you. I know that every one of us will have an interest in something in that budget that we don't want, that we don't want reduced. But keep the big picture in front of you. And so I appreciate being here tonight and I appreciate all these people being out here. Just looking at the numbers here, you know, we've had over 5,000 turn out for the first six meetings. And I think when we add this up, we'll be over 6,000 people having turned out for these town hall meetings. Stay involved, stay involved. And I promise it will be the absolute unvarnished truth. The truth is easy to remember. It's when you start, when you start tinkering with it, you know, that it's hard to remember. And then you get tripped up, you can't remember, you know, "Did I say three or did I say two yesterday?" Well, if the answer is four, you'd be surprised how easy four is to remember. And so Gretchen, I'm going to ask you now if you would tell us what the ground rules are for questions and answers tonight, and then we'll open it up to anybody who has questions and answers.
Okay. Thank you Chairman Gray. Aside from the sanctuary being filled and the balcony, we also have people in the fellowship hall, which is in another room. They can hear us and we also have people there who will be able to take their questions and they'll bring them to me so that we can answer them in here. What we're going to do is, there are two of us down here and two upstairs, and we'll be going around the room in that order. If you want a question, want to ask a question, just raise your hand and one of us will come to you with the microphone. Okay, Denise, would you like to take the first question?
First, I'd like to thank you Chairman Gray. I've worked with you as President of Shepherd Park a few years ago and we appreciate the work that you've done to help Shepherd Elementary. But in Ward Four, we need to reduce opportunities for crime of opportunity. And the only way you do that is to make police officers more visible in Ward Four. What will you do or what commitment will you make to assign more police officers to Ward Four? And the second part of my question is, all politics is local and in Ward Four, we like to determine the outcome of our elections. What involvement, if any, do you plan on having in the election for Ward Four in two years?
Well, in the latter question, I haven't even thought about it. I haven't, I haven't thought about it at all. As a matter of fact, I'll tell you the election I've been really focused on, my own. I, I, I don't mean to sound selfish, you all, but you know, that, that probably makes sense at least for the foreseeable future. So I haven't even thought about that, that, that question, you know, it'll probably come up again at a later point, but I haven't, I haven't dealt with that at all. So, but, and, and remember, next Tuesday, November 2nd, okay? We all got to get out and vote. Got to get out and vote, y'all. Got to get out and vote.
Okay.
Exactly. Now, now wait, the first part of your question was getting police officers more visible. And you, you put it in the context of more police officers. And frankly, again, in the interest of absolute truth, we don't have the capacity to hire more police officers right now. So that means that a case would have to be made if we put more police officers in Four, that we would take them from somewhere else. And I would want to sit down with Chief Lanier at this point and understand what the deployment pattern is for police officers and, and get a better understanding from you and others as well. Where do we feel that there is underdeployment at present in Ward Four of police officers? Now, some of it may be just the visibility of the police officers that we have. That's why I talked about trying to get more police officers out on the street and not just walking, but on bicycles, on motorbikes, on segways or whatever the case may be. And frankly, I think if we had the same number of police officers and more than were living in the District of Columbia, it would create a different, different sense of visibility also because they would be here 24/7 and not just during the time that they have their shift. So I'd like to hear more from you, I'd like to hear more from Muriel, if there's something that we can do to address what, if there is an underdeployment problem, I'd like to know what it is and I'll be happy to work with the chief to see how we can resolve that. But I don't want to make any promises that we're going to hire new police officers because I just don't think we can do that right now.
Hey Chairman Gray, our next question's coming from the balcony, Candace.
Hi, my name is Paula and I'm a social worker who works with homeless people. And under the other mayor, they closed down three shelters and I'm wondering, are you going to open up any shelters or what are you going to do about this, people were having to turn away?
Well, first of all, I, I commend the, I commend the current administration on the Housing First program. It is a national program that was brought here and I think it was a good idea to try to get people stabilized with respect to their housing. And I want to try to continue that. We have a horrific problem right now at DC General. We have over 200 families at DC General. And then of course, you may be talking about the singles as well, who we, who are the people that we typically see on the streets. And then there's a third group, by the way, that we don't see a lot of at all, and that's the group that I used to work with, and that is homeless youth that are much more invisible in the city. They typically go from one place to the other until they run out of places and wind up at places like Covenant House or Sasha Brews or Latin American Youth Center. I do think we need more of a presence in the downtown area. Franklin, Franklin was closed and, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure how we would deal with that at this stage. Maybe it's a matter of working with, you know, CCNV to try to open that one up to be more of a low-barrier shelter than what it is at present. You know, and the reality is, you know, let's, let's be honest with ourselves. As soon as somebody says, "Let's open up a shelter in somebody's neighborhood," you know what it's going, what the reaction is going to be, it's going to be negative. So if we're going to do that, we need to come together and say, "This is what we want to do and we need to make it happen." And I would love to be able to work with people in that community around how we do it and involve the people who, who live in that community making it happen. But I've been around NIMBYism for a long time. My first job was as the Executive Director of the Association for Retarded Citizens. And I used to see it all the time with respect to opening group homes for people with mental retardation. We kind of got past that once we closed Forest Haven, but it simply transfers to one more vulnerable population after another, and right now it's people who are homeless. So I would agree with you that we need another low-barrier shelter, we need to continue our emphasis on Housing First, and we need to work with communities to try to make sure that people will work with us to make this happen rather than fight it and ultimately stop it.
Chairman Gray, balcony, you're left.
Hi, how you doing? How you doing, Mayor Gray? Well, I am a new resident to the District of Columbia and I look at my paychecks and as you point out, it looks like they're still charging me income taxes and I don't have national suffrage anymore. So obviously, the right to vote is very important, perhaps more important than the right to sit in the front of a bus or eat at certain restaurants perhaps. And I was happy to hear you say you'd be interested in going to jail for such a right. So I was interested if you'd care to elaborate on that and what sort of nonviolent but resistance actions you would propose for up to half a million people to take part in, in order to get national attention on this struggle. Thanks.
Well, we've heard all kinds of suggestions and I intend to, this is something I intend to work on during the transition so that we develop a strategy. But I've heard, you know, strategies like actually sitting in front of the bridges, you know, that come into the city. Somebody, somebody suggested that we put toll booths up there, but I don't think that one will work. You know, they'd be, they'd be torn down immediately. But I think, I think being people who obstruct the normal flow of this city. You know, the amazing thing is, if you permit me, and that is, so many of the services of this city get used by people who don't live here, who don't live here. And we wind up paying for it. You know, the potholes that we have in the streets are not all created by the cars with DC tags on them. The, 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 the use of the police services, the use of fire, the use of the, the emergency services in the city is not just by the people who live in the city, and it shouldn't be, but people who, who live outside the city as well. But we ought to be compensated for that. And the way other jurisdictions are compensated is by having the ability to, to tax income at its source. I would welcome any input that you would like to give me on what you think would be some, some nonviolent ways of engaging in civil disobedience, and it's probably not much that I wouldn't be willing to do myself. Those, those, those who don't, who don't know me, they don't know what kind of activism I engaged in when we were trying to liberate 1,200 people from a place called Forest Haven. Boy, that was, that was a journey, let me tell you. People thought I was a heretic to say that people who lived in the institution, you know, could actually live in the community. Nobody would challenge that today, but that was yesterday. And the day will come too, when people will wonder why we didn't have statehood in the District of Columbia because we will have achieved it. So if you've got some ideas on that, I would love to hear from you. And I appreciate, by the way, I don't know where you lived before, but I sure am glad you live in the District of Columbia now.
Hey Chairman Gray, we're going to have this gentleman here.
Thank you. Mayor, I mean Chairman Gray, got to get used to that.
Yeah, that's what I am, the chairman, Democratic nominee. I've been called everything. By the way, I have a feeling when Muriel, when these budget cuts get out, he'll probably be called a few other things also.
My name is Bill Hassan, Precinct 56. I'd just like to have you comment on two things. You were talking about education and two of the components that I hope are included during the transition as well as when we start the new administration, is looking at the diet of the schools where these students go. It's very important. They're in competition, as you well know, I mean, I have several schools in the neighborhood that I live in. And by the time that they get to school eating these fast foods and sugars and stuff like that, it tends not to be good. Number one is looking at the diet that happens in the DC public schools. Second is physical education. I don't know what happened to physical education. Phys Ed, we used to call it Fiz Ed. And I'm in the DC public schools from time to time and sitting down for six or seven or eight hours is not healthy. And lastly, if you would give some attention to the immunization process as it relates to high blood pressure, cholesterol levels and that sort of thing with our kids, I noticed that there's beginning to be an academic of that also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you raised, you raised three issues, the, one of which was around physical education. And that of course runs hand in hand with your first issue, and that is nutrition. I was pleased to join with Mary Che in doing the Healthy Schools Act, which was adopted by the council, which really focuses on nutrition and nutritional content in the schools. And frankly, there are two components to that bill. One is focusing on nutrition and the other is actually focusing on physical fitness, which is the, the other issue that you raised. And we, we raised enough revenue even in this difficult climate. We raised a sales tax on soda, I think it was by, what was it, Muriel, about six cents? Five cents or something like that? 6%. It was a 99, 99 cent liter bottle would cost you a dollar five, just to give you an example. And we, in doing that, we created about $6 million of revenue to put into the schools to be able to implement that act. And so I think it'll be a step in the right direction. And by the way, I don't know how many of you all, I don't know how many of you all read the editorials, but it was one that was astounding last week to me, and that was the endorsements for the council. the endorsements for the council. Mary Chee wasn't endorsed, and she committed the awful act of suggesting that we have a longer school day. Now, what the heck is wrong with her? You know, for those, if there's anybody in here that lives in Ward Three, I hope you will vote for her, because she's been an outstanding council member, and she deserves to be returned to the council. And the third issue, what was the third issue?
Immunization.
Right. Immunization, yeah. You know, we had, we had, somebody was telling me about this, that I know at one point, you could not enroll your child in school without the immunizations having been done. And that's been relaxed, and the immunization rates have gone down. And that is a dangerous policy, because we're talking about communicable, you know, contagious diseases that children will pass along to each other, especially if they haven't been immunized. So, I want to look at that and see, because it's not an expensive effort. It's hugely expensive to correct it after you have had the problem. So, I'm glad you raised that. And, you know, we can have a conversation about healthcare at a later point, because it's an issue that is very important to me, and I've paid a lot of attention to in healthcare reform. But, you know, we have some of the highest incidences and prevalence of certain conditions like heart disease, cancer, diabetes, asthma in the District of Columbia, especially as you go further east. And a part of that is attributable to the lack of a real healthcare system, especially on the eastern end of this city. And we've got the opportunity now with healthcare reform to begin to build a system, because we will realize some savings in our Medicaid program as a result of that, because we've covered so many people. Obama's plan is actually gonna pick up a lot of people that we cover ourselves now and include them in the Medicaid program at a much less, much less, a lower cost than what it is for us at this point, Bill.
Chairman Gray, we're over here to your left.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Gray. I just want to piggyback on what has been said in regards to education and physical fitness and diet, and to tie in recreation. With your proposed cuts, Friends of Recreation Centers don't have the ability to raise funds, although I know Mr. Albert is working on it. Thank you.
You're working on that now?
Thank you very much. We, I would like to know what your thoughts are in terms of Friends of groups being able to raise funds in support of recreations, because we don't have that authority right now.
Yeah, somebody, I got.
On park property, I need to say.
I'm sorry.
On park property. We can do it somewhere else, but we can't do it at recreation centers.
I don't know what all the nuances are of that, but I think we would benefit from people being able to raise outside funds, you know, even, you know, foundation and corporate funds to be able to support some of our programs. So, I'd want to understand what the nuances are and what the reasons are that somebody said it can't be done. If it's not a good reason, then we ought to be able to move forward to do it. We need to make sure the controls are in place, you know, because all we need is one story that gets out there that somebody, you know, some Friends group raised the money, and somebody, you know, absconded with the money and spent it on something else, and it will taint everybody else. Everybody will get painted with the same brush. So there have to be strong controls in place if we go further in that direction. The other thing that I think, and Neil and I, you know, in the past, had some conversations about this, and that is, we've got a number of really nice recreation facilities in the city now, some of which go back to the time when he was the DPR Director, when they were developed. But we don't have the money now to have the level of staffing that we need. What we ought to do is reach out to some of these nonprofit groups and say, "You need a place to be. We need people to run these programs, but why can't we get together to get able to have a quick pro quo?"
Chairman Gray to your right, Denise.
How you doing?
I'm concerned, because I live in a neighborhood, and I am a parent, and we have our school, Rudolph Elementary, that's been closed for quite some time. My concern, I do not want it to be turned into a condominium as Hines was, but I think that we need to have our own special education school. And I think that Rudolph, definitely, with President Obama's children playing soccer there, it's a great neighborhood, and we need to rebuild it. The recreation center there is closed, so the youth are not engaged in any kind of activities, and they're engaged in the wrong kind of activities. And I think that Rudolph should be a prospective place to be a special education school.
Well, thank you for that. One of the things we want to be clear about is getting our buildings back into service, because when they sit there in mothballs, they deteriorate much more quickly when they're not being used. One of the things that I want to make sure we don't do is that we wind up running afoul of federal law and our own philosophy in the city when we develop more special education programs. I really want to see us put as many classes as we can into our regular public schools. It doesn't necessarily mean that those kids would be in a regular classroom at the outset, but there's no reason why we couldn't have a classroom in our public schools so that they get the chance to interact at a social, educational level with other children as well. And I think having a school that is focused specifically or only on special education may not create the kind of social opportunities that our kids really deserve. So, I'm with you in terms of, let's use some of our current facilities for those purposes. But if we're gonna do it and do it in a big way, let's do it so that we have an inclusive and integrated program of special education for our children with disabilities.
Chairman Gray to your right, Candace.
Ready, sir.
Chairman Gray, my name is Harold Foster, and like you, I'm a product of the DC Public Schools, including history-making Coolidge High School. I have a kind of a perspective I want to offer to you, and just ask you for your comments on it. After 36 years working in the public sector, 20 of them in the District of Columbia government, I find myself generally in agreement with the late Mayor Nixon, who said after he got elected mayor of Atlanta, he found out that you got about nine months to 12 months to really make your big impact, and about a year after that to follow up on that big impact. And he said after that, everything is damage control. So, with that kind of lead-in, what I want to offer for you in my own particular area is what I call gentrification. I don't call it gentrification. I call it gentrification, because not all gentrification is bad. If you eliminate drugs from a neighborhood, that to me is a form of gentrification. And I think everybody would agree that that's something that's positive. What we have a problem with in the district, and have always had a problem, I'm speaking as a third-generation Washingtonian, is gentrification, gentrification plus displacement. My rule is that if my mother cannot live in a neighborhood after it's been, quote, "developed," unquote, on her income as a retired government worker, then that's not good development. So I would encourage you to go ahead with your proposal to have a comprehensive economic development strategy, and to tie that to your proposal for things like workforce housing at Walter Reed, and some of the other steps that are gonna have to be taken throughout this city to make sure that those of us who have weathered the bad times are able to continue to live here now that we're looking at better times.
I couldn't agree with you more. And that is, we need to make sure that we preserve opportunities for people who have stayed the course to be able to continue to stay the course. You know, the HOPE 6 program, which was a federal program, is not one of our local programs. We've used it, but really what it has done is displaced a lot of people. It has replaced the housing with better-looking housing, but a lot of the people who lived there really couldn't come back, because there's basically a one-for-one replacement. And so, when people at other, higher levels of income came in, that meant not everybody could come back to the city. We have the new communities program, which, how long have we been working on that, Neil? About five, six years? But the theory, one of the theories underlying that is that you will have maybe three times as many units at the end of the day as you had when you started, which will give the opportunity for people who lived there previously to come back, but you also then add moderate and market-rate housing to create an economically-integrated community. But underlying it is preserving the opportunity for the people who live there to be able to stay there. And, you know, we're all concerned about it at some level or another, and that is people being pushed out the door, and they wind up living in Maryland and Virginia, or Lord knows where, we don't know where they are. And we ought to be, continue to be a diverse city that has a place for everybody who wants to be able to be here.
Balcony to your left, sir.
Hi again, Chairman Gray.
How you doing?
From the Reece Center. Okay, I have a two-part question. One is, I'm a lifelong resident of Ward Four, educated in Ward Four, and I've been living all over the city. What I don't like is there's no affordable housing in Ward Four. I shouldn't have to go to Ward Eight or to another ward outside of my neighborhood where I grew up and was educated at to have affordable housing. I have a daughter who graduated from DC Public Schools, who goes to an out-of-state college. And in order for her to get the out-of-state tuition, I have to remain a DC resident. Well, it's hard for me to remain a DC resident, because I'm a single parent, raising three kids on my own, and it's hard to stay in the district because of no affordable housing. That's the first part. Second thing is, and I don't want to, you know, what are you gonna do as far as affordable housing in Ward Four? Because I want to stay in Ward Four. I don't want to go to another ward. Not saying anything's wrong with anybody's ward, but I love Ward Four.
All right, Ward Four got it going on.
Okay, then my other thing is, I want to commend you as far as having early childhood education for pre-K students. But I also want to put a note in, because I don't know if it's being done now, but six years ago, when I tried to enroll my daughter into a pre-K program in the DC Public Schools, I was turned away because of my income. I don't think it's fair, because what I go out here and make shouldn't impact on my daughter receiving an early start on education. So I hope that now that the program has been revamped, that you're not basing it on an income, based, you know, basing on income, because I had to put her in a charter school to start off her education, because I thought it was unfair to go by my income for my daughter to get an early start on education.
Well, it is not based on income. I think there's a realization now that, you know, any more than a child who goes to kindergarten and finds that's not based on income either, and it shouldn't be that way, and is not now for three- and four-year-olds, because I think we all recognize the value of the investment in getting children at an earlier point. And frankly, the opportunity to keep families, just like you talked about, keeping families in the city, because they have high-quality education programs, especially early childhood education programs. So, that may have been head start that you were looking at at that point, but these are our own pre-K programs that are not income-based, they're not means-tested at all. There's just a recognition that frankly, we ought to fundamentally redefine when public education begins and start defining it as a three-years-old when kids start. So, I live up the street from Winston Educational Center, which is on Erie Street in southeast, and I went past there, it was right before school started, and they actually had yard signs out in front of the school in the community advertising their pre-K program to get three- and four-year-olds into the program. So, it's exciting to see that, and it's exciting to know that it doesn't matter what your income is or where you live, that there's an opportunity to have your child, you know, who's three and four, in a program. And I hope that we'll be able to do that to some extent with infant and toddler programs as well. The issue, the question you asked is, you know, around affordable housing is a critical one, and as you well know by the sophistication of the way you phrase the question, there is no easy answer to that. We've done a number of things. We've got the Housing Production Trust Fund, which is still around. That takes money from housing transactions, puts it into a fund. About three years ago, we had $60 million in that fund, all of which was being devoted to building affordable housing in the city. Because of the economy, we're down now to it being about $17 or $18 million going into that fund, which is no small sum of money, but it's not what we had before. We've worked on maintaining rent control. It's probably gonna be reauthorized. We have a new program called Inclusionary Zoning, which says to developers, "If you want to build a building, if you will include 8% of those units as affordable units, we will let you build more units than you otherwise would." And there's other efforts that we're making as well, some of which are in Ward Four. Frankly, the best opportunity we have in Ward Four to do workforce housing, affordable housing now, will probably be at Walter Reed, where we have 62 and 1/2 acres of property that will be developed. And I'm sure, Muriel, there's been discussion about affordable housing being a component of that. Is that right? It's probably in the plan. Yeah, it is in the plan. So, while one parcel is not an answer to the question that you raised, at least it's on the table, and given the size, it's probably the biggest undeveloped parcel in Ward Four at this stage, isn't it? 62 and 1/2 acres? So, I would hope that we would learn something from that experience and know how to do it also to the extent we can, you know, where, because a lot of it's gonna be infill in Ward Four, because we just don't have large parcels to develop new housing on. But I think Walter Reed will be a great opportunity for us to do that, and I think we're about ready to start fairly soon, aren't we? Fairly soon. Fairly soon.
Okay, Chairman Gray down here. Denise to your right.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Mitchell, and I am a resident of Ward Four. As we stated earlier, Ward Four has the largest population of seniors in the city. I haven't heard a word about seniors in Ward Four. We don't want to do the Eskimo Walk. We are bleeding in Ward Four as seniors, and when we go, for many of us, my phone rings, other people's phone rings, when we go for services, they just aren't here. The other half of my concern is youth. I've been a youth advocate for a very, very long time, and I happened to visit a school in this area with one kid who I was trying to recover. During my visit, I learned, well, I kinda suspected that this particular kid was on using drugs. And during my visit, it was confirmed by the principal and the dean of the school. And I was really flabbergasted, because my first question is, "Well, how is the kid gonna learn on drugs? And what do we have in the system for those kids who are on drugs?" Let's face it, we all are up here. There are some people still down here that we need to reach them.
Well, the first question you asked about seniors, I think there are two components that we have, but we've done a pretty good job with, and solved the problem by any stretch, and that is the continued development of wellness centers. And Ward Four now has the Hattie Homes Center, which is a really nice center. I've been there several times myself. And, you know, for people who need the services, you know, who want the companionship, who want the friendship, who want services, those are good places to do that. And we have now, Veronica, you're the expert on that, how many wellness centers do we have? You're the one that started. How many people know Veronica Pace, who helped start, you know, a lot of these programs in the city? Yeah. Well, she's a national expert on senior services. Well, let me finish, let me finish the answer. The wellness centers, and then I believe we should develop aging-in-place programs also, which will allow people to stay where they are. It's not as expensive, and frankly, it's more natural. We now have six chapters of aging-in-place programs in the city. Palisades, Capitol Hill, Penn Branch, we got six of them across the city, and we need to develop more. And the underlying concept is that people would be able to stay in their home, maybe have two or three other seniors who may want to live together to come with them, and again, much more, much, much, much less expensive than out-of-home care, and far more natural. And the wellness centers are a nice complement to what they do in the daytime.
I'm talking about another senior who, I mean, who has property encroachment, and not, along with myself. I'm talking about issues that happen to those of us who are, praise God, not ready for wellness centers, but those who are functioning in place, and those who cannot get the support of the city. And I hope you do something to shut DCRA down.
Well, I don't, I think the functions that are performed by DCRA need to continue to be performed, so I don't think we can shut it down. You know, in a lot of ways, I think DCRA, there's some ways in which DCRA has done a better job in the last couple of years. So, but we can't shut it down. We gotta be able to have those functions continue to be performed. I think if we, and maybe, you know, Muriel knew more about the specifics of the situations you cited, it would give us better insights into what would have been an appropriate intervention. I mean, if people are taking advantage of folks like that, the first thing I think of is, that's a law enforcement problem.
Chairman Gray, back here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Paulette Powell, and I live in Ward Four.
My name is Paulette Powell, and I live in Ward 4. I live in the area where there's a cluster of schools.
Pull the mic up a little bit, there you go.
Where there's a cluster of schools, McFarland, Roosevelt, the Health School, and the Charles School. I noticed that they have redo, done the court, the playfield. But when I look at the structure of Roosevelt in my neighborhood, I am very concerned about that, and I would like to know what are you going to do about that area of schools right there?
I mean, the physical condition of the schools?
Yes, they're in a deplorable condition. Windows falling out, if you stay on 13th Street and look at the building, if you go in the back end playfield and look at the building, it is deplorable.
Well, I think one of the things we could do is try to get you the master facilities plan. One of the things we said is we weren't going to take 20 years to do these schools, and it was accelerated. I think it's now probably on a five-to-10-year schedule. I'm not sure where Roosevelt is in there, and I think we've done some work on McFarland, haven't we? Roosevelt is this year? Okay, then Roosevelt is in the facilities plan for fiscal year 2011, so I guess the answer to that question is, it is in the offing, it is coming up. And I know we did, I don't think we did a complete renovation of McFarland, but I know some work was done in McFarland. So, but anyway, the answer to your Roosevelt question is, this year.
Thank you. The balcony to your right.
Hi Chairman, right here.
Hi Chairman Gray, my name's Elizabeth, and I'm part of Save Our Safety Net, and we've been really concerned about all of the cuts that have been happening as a result of these budget shortfalls that we've been having, and I was really excited to hear you talk about the need for new revenue, and we hope that you and all the council members who are here today and the rest of the council will seriously consider raising income tax on those who are most able to pay in the city in order to deal with this budget shortfall and protect the services that we really need in the city through this economic recession.
I've, I think at every town hall meeting, somebody has made that recommendation, and you know what? If I get the sentiment that people are willing to do that across the city, then I would be more than happy. You know, some of these services that we're going to have to cut potentially, especially to get to 400 million, you know, you just want to put your finger down your throat. I mean, it is really so upsetting to see what we may have to do, so I think to the extent that we can put the case out there for what will happen, if we don't find some additional money from somewhere, then I think, frankly, the people of this city are very compassionate, in my opinion. And having been here all my life, that's my sentiment, so. And I think people like yourself and other advocates can help make the case. And I think the case ought to be made not on putting people on a guilt trip, which I've heard some advocates do, it ought to be made on the basis of the importance of the need, because I think that will resonate better with people. So I ask you to help us do that.
Chairman Gray, down here to your left, over here, here. To your left.
Oh, all the way over, okay.
How are you? I'm, sorry, that's a little loud. I'm Brandon Proctor. You spoke on vocational opportunity as a member of a youth organization called YearUp. I would, I definitely agree with you as far as like, you know, increasing that opportunity. A good field, as you spoke on about vocational opportunities and like fields, you spoke on electrician and plumbing. I believe another one is IT. It's a field that's very like wide-range, not that hard to get a job. As soon as I entered the program, I got a few phone calls about job opportunities. YearUp is an organization that has changed my life by far, and I believe I speak for the majority of the people in my program by saying that it's completely life-changing as far as working on professional skills, networking, and just really putting yourself out there. It's the reason why I'm here today, as well as my other two colleagues. I know you're a busy fellow, Mr. Gray, but I guarantee you, if you stopped by and just sat in on a few classes, you would be astounded at how hungry some of the students are there, and I just feel like a little more support towards it would be excellent.
What program is it?
It's called YearUp. YearUp, it's called, yeah, YearUp. It's a...
YearUp?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll pass it to a colleague of mine to better explain.
Okay, where's it located?
It's in Arlington, Virginia, I believe. It's, it's, is it in Arlington? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. She can better explain the location, I apologize.
Even though it's in Arlington, Virginia, it's for the DC area also, because DC and Maryland and Virginia students go to this vocational school. But we're trying, we're here to talk about more nonprofit, it's a nonprofit organization also, trying to figure out a way that students, especially students that don't like to go to college, even though this program give you 18 college credits, finding a way that YearUp can get to DC. Because now, I've been there, I'm in my internship phase, and I'm interning at AOL.
How is it funded?
Huh?
How is it funded?
It's nonprofit.
No, but where's the money come from to run the program?
DOES.
DOES is funding a program in Virginia?
Um...
We, we're going to work to get more information on this, okay?
Hey, Chairman Gray.
I, if you could, we'd like to work with you, and if we could work with our staff, we'll work on that, okay? Yeah, I hear you, but if the information you just gave us is correct, I just feel like we have a shovel digging you into a hole, okay? Yes. We have enough problems funding programs, Wards 1 through 8, without Ward 10.
Hey Chairman Gray, the balcony to your left. Balcony to your left.
Good evening Chairman Gray. First, I'd like to express my appreciation and admiration for the way you've been able to travel through the city with the protocol that you've exhibited and making everyone that you have been speaking to feel heard. I would like to, my name is San Luisa Barnes Mosaid, I'm a member of this church, I live in Ward 4, and as traveling with you, I've heard many, many problems that have been presented that I feel could be resolved with volunteers. We have a host of knowledge here in this audience. We have people who have vast experiences that are no longer working, but they still have their talents. We, if you go, it's a shame that DC is only 10 miles square, and the people on the west side of the city are not familiar with the needs of the people on the east and vice versa. And I think that if we had a Department of Voluntarism or something like that, where we have many, many, as you know, volunteer organizations in DC, but they don't relate to each other either. So if we had a central office where people who had volunteer skills, and I'm sure we asked a raise of hands, there are people in this audience that will raise their hands that would be willing, more than willing, to share their talents. Many of the problems that were presented to you could be resolved through those people.
Well, that's a great suggestion. We've had, you know, we have served DC, which is an organization that does that, but you know what? What you put your finger on is the whole underlying concept of One City, and that is people knowing what other people's needs are and having the view that we should reach out to one another to try to solve those needs. We're going to try to work to compertize what One City means. It's, you know, it's an abstraction in some respects, but it communicates. The question is, how do you take it and then translate it into things like you just said? And that is people reaching out to other people. You know, we talked about the illustration of two civic associations working together on opposite sides of the city, but there's so many other ways in which we can do that. And I ask you and others to help us with concrete suggestions, so we have a One City program going into 2011.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Doing very good, Mayor Gray. And I want to just ask really a question in terms of your perspective, because first thing I want to do is also thank you, because when the Neighborhood Assistance Corporation came to Washington DC, which I'm vice president of, you came and welcomed us here. We saw roughly about 65,000 people in that time who were all in danger of losing their homes and of having high mortgages against them. And that's what we're seeing right now, is a devastation that is going on through our neighborhoods and our communities. And unfortunately, I'm seeing a whole lot of seniors being affected who have basically refinanced their homes to sometimes help relatives or children, that type of thing in the boom-boom years, and now are being basically foreclosed on by mortgage companies out there. And the fact is, is everybody's talking in the national press about that they're working on modifying loans, but if you ever tried to call one of these lenders or banks, you can't get anybody on the phone that's going to get you an answer. And so what I'm saying, and I hope that we can do, is move towards creating a moratorium on foreclosures until these banks and lending companies can pass a stink test. And a stink test means that they did not engage in fraudulent means, that they also engaged in serious negotiations with the consumer to modify the loan so that they can stay in the house and the neighborhood, and to realize that when they also gave that money, sometimes the bank has got to feel some pain by being able to forgive some debt in order to get down to the place where we can have our neighborhood stable and keep tax-paying members in their homes and in their neighborhoods.
Well, it's an excellent point. And by the way, I want to thank you for your leadership for so many years with NACA. I went down not only to the opening, but a lot of people don't know, I went back one night about 11 o'clock just to talk to people who were there at the convention center, and it was unbelievable the number of people who were there. It must have been 2,000 people who were at that moment in the convention center, and some of them had been there for hours waiting to renegotiate their mortgages and get refinanced and whatnot. If one didn't come away from that experience with an appreciation for the magnitude of the problem, I don't think they would ever have any appreciation for it. So I would ask you to work with us, Reverend Hagler, during the transition period, to see how we can work, you know, there seems to be an increasing sentiment at this stage, not only here but around the country, to impose a moratorium on foreclosure so that people can, especially those who are seniors, can retain their homes. And I'd love to be able to work with you, you know, during the transition on that. And NACA, for those of you who don't know about NACA, it is a phenomenal organization. We heard, I heard, talked to people who had their mortgages refinanced and they came away with interest rates of like 1%, 2% as a result of the work that NACA had done with them. And Reverend Hagler's been very modest, because he was one of the people who helped found it, along with Bruce Marks, who is the CEO, I guess, of the organization now. So it's a great organization, I would urge you to find out more about it.
Chairman Gray to your right, Denise.
Chairman Gray. Good evening, Mr. Gurt.
Good evening.
Chairman. I work for DCPS. I'm a school teacher for the District of Columbia Public Schools. Y'all need to clap for that. Hard-working teacher.
And actually, you know what? It's a shame that we had to solicit an applause for somebody who works with our children every day. Let's give it up, all right? Come on, y'all.
I've been working for years at the charter school for over a decade, and I decided to be a part of the wonderful District of Columbia Public Schools in January, and I'm a very proud teacher there. I'm also a candidate for National Board Certification, and I have a problem with, and I speak for over 90% of the teachers, with this new evaluation system. It contradicts, it not only contradicts the standards of District of Columbia for teaching and learning, but it also contradicts itself. The instrument is not valid or reliable. And most of all, it is in contrast with, you know, the National Board Certification for Accomplished Teachers. So if teachers can't get to know their children and they're evaluated with that kind of instrument, it will really not only impact the teacher's employment, but the students as well.
Yeah. I'm glad you said "impact their employment," because that is the system, impact is the system, is that right? I've had a lot of conversations with folks. In fact, I met with the DCPS management team last week, and we had a conversation about impact. And I think that none of the other approaches have been validated or necessarily reliable either. And one of the things that I talked with them about was, how do we have a continuous process that will validate the impact system? In fact, we even got into a conversation about the reality of the diversity in the backgrounds of our children with respect to some have economically-challenged, socially-challenged situations, and that's where we talked about this value-added component in the impact system. So what I've asked for is to have a systematic process in place, a process of systematizing how we refine this, because we obviously have to have tools of accountability, we have to have an evaluation system, not just for DCPS, but for the teachers as well, because now that we have pay-for-performance, there will have to be some way of determining, you know, who gets the bonuses and who doesn't get the bonuses. But what I think I'd like to hear from, and I have no intention of micromanaging the schools, because that's the chancellor's job, not mine, but I would like to hear from teachers around what their issues are. And I think that Washington Teachers Union ought to hear about that also. That seems to be an area to me where the Teachers Union ought to step up and say, here's what our position is, you know, on the evaluation system. It is so fundamental to many things, not the least of which is the teachers being able to keep their jobs.
Chairman Gray.
Are we done?
Yes, I was about to say, we are going to have to wrap up, I'm sorry, because of the lateness of the hour. Everyone did receive a questionnaire when they came in, if not, there are some extra ones outside. Please fill those out, get them back to me, or put them in the basket out front. We will get those questions to Chairman Gray, he will be able to review those, and many of them we will answer and put up on the internet.
Well, I want to turn it back over to Councilmember Bowser, and I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Once again, there has to be close to 1,000 people who came out of Ward 4 tonight, if not 1,000. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Let's hear it for Chairman Vince Gray. Now, we know Ward 4, it's not over. November 2nd is the general election, and what are you going to do on November 2nd? You're going to go out and vote, right? Let's hear it, vote! But you don't have to wait till November 2nd.